Jim, uh, Moritor of St. Luke's Church on the Avenue. Pastor Moritor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. It is good to be with you all. So let us, let us pray. Breath of life, merciful healer, source of justice. From generation to generation, you've raised leaders to protect the vulnerable and guide the community in fairness and in truth. In times of trouble, you raise prophets to name our failings and to call us back to the path of righteousness. In this time, you have raised up these leaders, these imperfect and good people, to reflect your image and likeness, your care and compassion for the citizens of Baltimore. As they confront the many challenges of our time, grant them holy wisdom and draw out the very best of their creativity. Through our work together, make this fair city a place of wholeness and inclusion. We give thanks for these who stand before us to take on these challenges of pandemic, of racial justice, of inclusion, of LGBTQ individuals. We give you thanks for their willingness to be the face of our communities and to represent us so that each and everyone may have a voice that is heard, a life that is given dignity and respect. Pour out yourself on these, our leaders and us, your people, that each day we may grow together in unity and in purpose for the sake of all that is good in this great city we call home. Give thanks in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for that. Um, members, uh, we, uh, next up, we will, uh, state the pledge of allegiance. So please, uh, turn to a flag and say the pledge of allegiance, allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up, before, uh, we go into the showcase, uh, members, um, I wanted to take this day, uh, and make it a special day. Um, it's special for many reasons. Uh, one of the main reasons, uh, it was, um, the birthday of our beloved lost citizen, friend, coworker, colleague, legacy builder in Dante Barksdale. Um, myself, many of you, the mayor and other members, um, have all spoken out recently about the loss of our dear friend Dante Barksdale. Uh, and what his legacy, what his life, what his light meant, uh, not only to the city of Baltimore, but honestly, the world. Uh, Dante was looked at as a subject matter expert as it relates, uh, to, uh, interrupting violence and connecting our young folks who may be lost for whatever reasons, uh, to positive and productive outcomes. Uh, Dante utilized his life, um, better known as Tater, utilized his life, uh, to pour into the young folks that were coming behind him. Uh, and, you know, I don't think that, um, every, every loss of life in our city, uh, particularly senseless loss of life as it relates to violence, um, is troubling. But I understand and know how deeply Dante's loss, uh, is going to be felt from east to west to north to south Baltimore. So today, uh, we wanted to pay, pay special tribute and homage, uh, to Dante on his birthday. Uh, his family reached out and asked that, uh, something, uh, be done special. And I want to provide a huge opportunity for Dante's sister, uh, Ms. Peely Houston, Peely Houston, to, uh, speak on behalf of the family, uh, and just talk about the life, legacy, uh, and loss of Dante. Ms. Houston?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, everyone. I'm glad that, um, my brother was afforded this opportunity to. My apologies. This is an honor and thank you. My brother, he was, he was very special to all of us and his stuff has greatly impacted our community and also our family. I pray and hope that his legacy is carried on, especially in his strive for nonviolence and education. I myself and my youngest daughter, she was like his best friend. She's eight years old. We came up with a slogan and, um, he said, "The most gangster thing a person can do is to forgive." That is just the most bravest thing in the world I've heard him say. And I want to preach forgiveness. So we came up with Dante's Way. Dante's Way is through education and through nonviolence and forgiveness. So I pray and hope that one day we'll have what we call Tater's Day, where we give the community an opportunity to still reap the remnants of what my brother's work was. He gave away coats for children. He asked and helped and guided towards health, healthcare and educational programs. And I'm hoping that we can move forward with Dante's Day, possibly through myself and my family and maybe possibly some posters or maybe a billboard that expresses Dante's and his strive for forgiveness in our city. Thank you.
No, thank you, Ms. Houston, um, not only for sharing your amazing brother to us, um, but also shining light on exactly who he was, uh, and what his legacy will be remaining in the city. Um, the council does not, uh, take that lightly. Uh, that's why we wanted to pause our agenda today. We want to pause our hearing today, uh, just to, um, pay homage to your amazing brother. So thank you so much, Ms. Houston.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues, for, um, allowing us to pay homage to, uh, Tater Barksdale. Uh, next up, uh, we will go into a showcase. Um, I thought that this was, um, kind of consistent with falling after, um, our honoring of, of, of Tater. Um, because we know how much he loved and poured into young folks behind them, behind him. And, uh, today, uh, we get to honor a young woman who, uh, many of you know as our council page, Ms. Ayana Zenzelley Rushing. Uh, she's been with us for quite some time. She was here in the previous council she carried over. Uh, she, he constantly showed up during COVID. Uh, she was always prepared, always on time. Truly, truly appreciative of all the work that she's been able to do just in the past 100 days for this council. Uh, but I know that that was also indicative of what she was able to do for the previous, uh, council term. Um, Ms. Ayana was placed with us through the Maryland Youth, uh, and Law, the Law. Uh, she's a student at Bard Early College, High School. Uh, members, a copy of Ayana's, um, paper can be found on your desk. So right now, Ms. Zenzelley Rushing, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay. When, share my screen. Oh, my word, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Okay, so, uh, I did my advocacy project on homelessness in Baltimore City. Um, I'm Ayana Zenzelley Rushing, is, uh, what's the most you said? And I am a student at Bard High School, Early College. I'm a senior and I'm also the Baltimore City Council Page. Um, a little more about me, I am the founder of The Queen's Daughters, which is a nonprofit humanitarian outreach. And part of our work is aiding the homeless in our community. So, um, when I had the opportunity to do an advocacy project, I of course chose the topic of homelessness. Um, I completed this project hoping to bring attention to homelessness in the city of Baltimore. And when I was doing my research, um, I came across, um, a lack of accessible shelters and transitional housing and abundance of, of underutilized space and unaffordable housing in Baltimore City. So the first issue with homelessness in Baltimore City would be a lack of shelters and transitional housing. Um, shelters are places that provide temporary residence for homeless people. Um, so they can be protected from weather exposure and things like that. And transitional housing is temporary housing, which is typically a room or apartment that provides services for those. The problem here is that there are only 31 of these shelter homes and we need more of them. It would help keep them more, um, safe from outside dangers and make it easier for them to find stable income as preparation for the future. Second issue is underutilized space. Baltimore has a lot of underutilized space. It can be used for the benefit of homeless people. Um, this is a map of vacant properties projected for demolition in the summer of 2020. Um, as you can see, it's highly been traded and there were buildings projected for demolition. And these aren't all the vacant properties. These were just the ones that were being demolished, summer 2020. And within the past year, you've had a thousand 622 vacant buildings. Um, this space can be used more productively. Like, for example, we can make them into resource centers, job development programs, education, health service programs, or simply just as dwelling space. Um, we just find more effective ways and more efficient ways to make the lives of these people comfortable and eventually lead them out of homelessness, the epidemic of homelessness. Um, third issue that I, um, talked about in my project is the lack of affordable housing. Um, property taxes in Baltimore City are high and most people cannot afford their living situation. Um, so that creates a lack of affordable housing. Property taxes are 1.72%. And as you can see, that's high on, uh, in comparison to the other counties in Maryland. Um, we're bottom here with the longest. Uh, property taxes are too high for the citizens of Baltimore City and, um, they should be lowered. Maybe Baltimore City can, uh, the Baltimore City Council can provide tax vouchers for residents to offset this price a little bit. Um, the decrease in the tax rate would make housing more affordable and would decrease homelessness because houses would be more accessible. So, in conclusion, for my advocacy project, I found that there is an excess, there's a lack of accessible shelters and transitional homes. Um, there's unaffordable housing and, um, and an abundant, an abundance, sorry, of underutilized space. So I'm asking the council to move to use funding in a way that will help provide homeless people with these programs or these, um, amenities, whether that's, uh, rebudgeting, fundraising, vouchers, um, just for us to get it more in the conversation, uh, so we can repurpose the space and make housing more available and make the lives of these people in our community better. And should in turn make our city better. So thank you for your time.
No, thank you. Um, we sincerely appreciate your presentation, your advocacy, um, and definitely your assistance. Again, not just with the previous council, but with the current council, you have definitely been part of the glue that's kept us running smoothly in very, uh, difficult and, uh, challenging times. Um, again, uh, your responsiveness, your timeliness, uh, you're willing to just kind of pitch into in very difficult situations, uh, truly shows exactly who you are. Um, but it also shines a huge bright light on the future that we have with young folks like you all across this city. So I know you're going to be with us, uh, for a few more meetings. Um, but, uh, I just under, I just want you to know how much we value your help and your assistance and we look forward to supporting you, uh, for years and years to come. So if I ask at this point for the council to give, uh, Ms. Ayana a huge round of applause for all that she's done for us and what she means to the city and what she'll do in the future. So thank you.
Thanks so much.
No, thank you. Look at that, round of applause. Um, uh, next up, we're going to go to roll call. So clerk, uh, please call the roll.
President Mosby, council members Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed to the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the March 8th, 2021 proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing none, the journal is adopted. Bill sound, bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two and three of the agenda. We will now move to bills being introduced for first reading.
City Council Bill 21-0050, Burglar Alarms Registration and Regulation, False Alarms. For the purpose of revising the fees assessed to alarm systems users for repeated false alarms, altering the number of false alarms within the year that will result in the placement of the premises into a no-response status, requiring that alarm system monitors make certain additional attempts to verify the need for a police response, making certain stylistic changes and providing for a special effective date. Sponsored by the council president on behalf of the administration, council members Bullock and Middleton.
Seeing no hands, this, uh, this resolution has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Now on to City Council Bill 21-51.
City Council Bill 21-51, Rezoning 4900 Boston Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 4900 Boston Street, Block 6820, Lot 55, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the I-2 zoning district to the IMU-2 zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council Member Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-52, Rezoning Blocks 6458, Lot 004, and Block PSC 0, Lot 85. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Block 6458, Lot 4, and Block PSC 0, Lot 85, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the I-2 zoning district to the R-8 zoning district. Sponsor, Cohen.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Uh, on to the next, uh, bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-53, Rezoning 4207 to 4209 Menlo Drive. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 4207 to 4209 Menlo Drive, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the I-1 zoning district to the OIC zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Chair Schleifer.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. Uh, on to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-54, Rezoning 605 South Caton Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 605 South Caton Avenue, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, from the C-2 zoning district to the I-2 zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council Member Porter.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-55, Zoning, Continual Use, Conditional Use Retail Goods Establishment with Alcoholic Beverages Sales, 2600 North Howard Street. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a retail goods establishment with alcoholic beverages sales on the property known as 2600 North Howard Street, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Chair Stokes.
This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. On to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-56, Urban Renewal, Canton Industrial Area. For the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for the Canton Industrial Area to revise the boundary of the plan to remove a certain property, replacing certain exhibits to reflect the change, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for the application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council Member Cohen.
Will the gentleman from the First District like to speak on this bill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this bill is, uh, the result of further development in this corridor. Um, the use has changed. Uh, it's right by a railroad spur. Um, and we look forward to a hearing. It has full support from both community associations in the area. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, uh, Councilman Cohen. Uh, this bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Next up, 21-57.
City Council Bill 21-57, Repeal Reisterstown Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area and Plan. For the purpose of repealing Ordinance 09-219, which established the Reisterstown Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area and Plan, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council Member Schleifer.
Chairman Schleifer, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill?
George, just real quick, this is a reintroduction of a bill that we passed last term, uh, to basically be able to get a senior center that provides resources to low-income seniors so that they can stay living in their residences longer, uh, and to repeal this, um, this U R P and then also do the rezoning. So that's what that bill is. Uh, thank you so much.
No, thank you, Chairman. Uh, this bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development. Was that a surprise, guys? Next up, we're going to 21-58.
City Council.
Now we have a new committee. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-58, Real Property Tax Installment Plans. For the purpose of authorizing that the real property taxes to be owed on certain properties may be paid through a monthly installment plan, establishing the maximum term for an installment payment plan in accordance with state law, requiring the, the Director of Finance to adopt regulations to implement this subtitle, defining certain terms, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to installment payments of real property taxes in Baltimore City. Sponsors, Council Members Ramos, Bullock, Dorsey, and Middleton.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Ramos, would you like to speak on behalf of this bill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. Uh, this is a reintroduction of a bill I had earlier. Um, we've worked through a lot of the issues, uh, and, uh, as you know, we've been working on, uh, the issue of tax sale. And this is a bill that will help people avoid tax sale by being able to pay their, um, taxes along the way, um, as opposed to in two lump sums. So I look forward to the hearing and thank you so much for, um, the cosponsors and for your support. Thank you.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Is, are there any additional cosponsors at this time? I see the hand of Councilman Glover. If we could please note the hand of Councilman Burnett, as well as Council, uh, Councilman Cohen. Are there any other hands out there? Chairman Stokes, Councilman Torrance, Chairman Conway. I think that's it. Um, again, Councilwoman Ramos, thank you for this timely, uh, bill. Uh, there is no perfect bill. There's no perfect process. Uh, this is a bill that, uh, Councilwoman Ramos has been working on since the beginning of this particular term. We understand and know the importance of where we are right now and the economic downturn that COVID is going to place on many of our residents, particularly our residents that are disproportionately impacted by, uh, property taxes every single year. Uh, that's our seniors in our community. Many of them are stuck in the situation of being forced to kind of save up throughout the year to pay their taxes. Uh, this would just allow them to lump it into their monthly, uh, expenses and ensuring that they stay on track and on top of it. So again, thank you for your advocacy of this issue. I look forward to having a very successful and productive hearing. Uh, next up, uh, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 21-59.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, if we could go back, uh, 21-58, uh, will be assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Now on to 21-59, Madam Clerk.
21-59, Study and Report Succession Planning. For the purpose of requiring that the Department of Human Resources, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city council examining the short and long-term sustainability of the city's internal workforce to ensure that we are able to provide and maintain appropriate service delivery standards for our constituents and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Council Members Stokes, McCray, Middleton, Porter, Ramos, and Conway.
Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, our employees are the greatest asset that we have and deliver city services to our constituent. But a large number of those individuals are eligible for retirement and will be leaving the city over the next couple of years. For decades, government employment, government employer has opened doors to middle-class life. It allows individuals to buy homes, raise families, and build lifelong friendships with colleagues. In anticipation of this transition, we need to take a proactive approach to forecast the management and workforce needs of the city over the last five years. But more importantly, this legislation will look at what systems currently in place or need to be created to aggressively hire and promote current Baltimore City resident employees to these promotions. So as we continue to advocate for workforce opportunities for our residents and our young people, we must provide pathways into city government that will create generational change. I would appreciate my colleagues' support and look forward to a thoughtful dialogue. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Stokes. Again, this is another very timely, uh, bill. We know institutional knowledge is critical to the operations and functions of the city of Baltimore. Succession planning, whether in a corporation or in public sector, is critical for the upkeep of effective and efficient operations. I think this is timely, not only as it relates to providing upward mobility, uh, for, uh, many city workers uh, that look to kind of move up the ladder and look to move in other job capacities. But also, we talk about local hiring, we talk about, you know, elevating our young folks, uh, to some of these other positions. It gives us that front-to-end load associated with not only succession into other jobs and upward mobility, but also the succession into our young folks having access to these entry-level city jobs. So again, I think this is very timely. Look forward to a very productive hearing on that, uh, this bill. Do we have any additional cosponsors? I'm sorry. I think I see the hand of, uh, Councilman Glover, uh, Councilman, Chairman Costello, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Torrance, uh, and Councilman Burnett. Um, uh, so if that could please, if we could please note that, uh, that bill, that bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Uh, next up, the resolutions to be introduced. Uh, clerk, please read the resolutions.
Resolution 21-35R, Informational Hearing, Passing Through Baltimore City Public School Students. For the purpose of urging the Baltimore City Public School System CEO to explain to the city council why students are being promoted or passed through to higher grade levels when the students are academically unprepared to move beyond their current grade level. Sponsors, Council Members Stokes, Bullock, Ramos, Porter, and Middleton.
Uh, Chairman Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to suspend rules 10-2, 10-3, call for here, Council Bill 21-35R.
Hearing and seeing, uh, no unreadiness. Uh, please proceed.
Um, uh, this particular, I call for a hearing on April the 8th at 5:00 PM. It will be virtual with the Education and Workforce Development, and it will be televised on Trump City 25.
So with the rule suspended, uh, we will have that. So if you could say that one more time, uh, for the general public.
I call for a hearing on April the 8th at 5:00 PM with the CEO to come and explain to us why the kids in, not just this school, other schools, why they are passed why they are being elevated to another level. In other words, to explain to the city council why students are being promoted to grade level course, not passing. Once they fill the course, they are required to make up the course at the parents and the students' expense. And so what I'm saying is, once they are promoted to a grade level, not to the ninth to the 10th grade, it has to be clear. I don't understand. I've just learned in a council to come in and ask the CEO to explain why did that happen? Not just at that school, but at other schools throughout the city.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chairman Stokes, for that. Um, that resolution has been assigned to Education, Workforce, Youth, uh, Committee. Uh, we understand and know the byproducts of No Child Left Behind and many other ills, uh, that is plaguing our current school system. So I think to your point, it's just really trying to dig into not only that particular issue, uh, but if it's a broader issue and how the council can be, uh, productive partners with the school system, uh, to ensure that, uh, we, uh, get ahead of this. I think this also invokes the importance of all of I think this also invokes the importance of all of everyone having a seat at the table as well as parental responsibility. So it's that full school community environment that we hope to also come out of this hearing to understand and know again how we can be better stewards and better partners with the school system to provide better outcomes for our young folks. I see Chairman Yitzi Schleifer's hand raised.
That's what I was getting at, as a co-sponsor.
Yep. Yes, Mr. Chair. Please add Chairman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Moving on to consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved, sir.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries and the calendar is approved. We will now move on to a second reader. Bill's a second reader. At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read second and third. I, pardon me. Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
No, thank you. Hearing and seeing no concerns or unreadiness, we will have short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Next up, we're going to go first into Economic and Community Development. We're going to start off with City Council Bill Twenty-One dash twenty-one, Late Fees and Past Due Fees. At this point, I'd like to recognize Chairwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard this bill on March sixteenth.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice President. Before you begin, we need the clerk to read the bill. Sorry.
That's right.
Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill Twenty-One dash twenty-one, Late Fees for Past Due Rent.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The sponsor of this bill was Councilman Stokes of the Twelfth District. The hearing was held on March sixteenth. There are committee amendments which were sent electronically to all council members. The amendments would define the term government benefit to include certain types of government benefits. It will also emphasize that the bill does not apply to leases for H A B C public housing. And and also add new language to require that leases that continue penalties for late payment of rent must also include a provision prohibiting the landlord from applying a penalty for late payment of rent until certain conditions are met. The conditions are that the tenant's payment of rent is more than ten days late or the tenant has received their regular scheduled government benefit disbursement. The tenant must have previously provided the landlord with certain written notice about the expected date of receipt of the benefit. I move the committee amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a second?
Second, Councilman.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The amendments are, I'm sorry.
I'll be, I need to abstain due to a conflict, Mr. President.
Understood. Please make sure that we note that Councilman Burnett is abstaining from that amendment.
Yeah, I move the bill favorable as amended.
So that those amendments passed, we have a motion on the floor to move the bill favorable with amendments.
Don't move, Councilman Stokes.
We have, we still might move, and now we need somebody to second.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion is approved. Got you. Please note that Councilman Burnett is abstaining from approval of this as well. The motion is approved. The bill moves on to third reader. Madam Chair.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I ask to be recognized.
Sure. The floor is yours, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure exactly the parliamentary order here, but I'd like to make a motion that the next bill on the agenda, twenty-one oh oh twenty-two, be moved back to committee. And I ask for a second to this motion.
Okay. First, before we do that, and I'll let you do that, let's just make sure that we appropriately invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one to advance the previous bill, Councilman Dorsey, to third reader. So and then I'll come back to you, and you can make your motion. Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, perfect. Madam Chair, if we could, if you could go down the path of invoking City Council Rule twelve dash one for the advancement to third reader.
I make a motion to advance bill number.
To invoke, to invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one.
City Council Rules to move the bill to third reader, bill number twenty-one dash zero-zero-two-one.
So there's a motion on the floor to invoke City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement from second to third reader. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Actually, we have to do a roll call for this. So Madam Clerk, if you could call roll.
President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmembers Cohen.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Sorry, had issues with my thing. Aye.
Burnett.
Abstain.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
And Ramos.
Yes.
The ayes have it, the bill moves on to third reader. Madam Clerk, please call twenty-one dash two-two.
City Council Bill Twenty-One dash twenty-two, Security Deposit Alternatives.
Thank you. At this time, before we go to the chair of the committee, I think Councilman Dorsey would like to have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that this bill be returned to committee.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor to return this bill back to committee. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving this bill back to committee, please say aye.
Before we.
Say that again? Oh, sure.
Thank you.
The floor is yours. Yep.
Look, I want to just make a point here that a committee member should not have to resort to second reader just to have an idea heard out. That's what the committee is for. By the time the opportunity, by the time that a bill comes to second reader, the opportunity has already passed to allow information to be presented by experts and examined by committee members and deliberative action to be taken on a recommendation by the committee. And it, the, the, the process of the committee with this bill was undermined. Concerns that warranted consideration were barred from being raised or treated.
Mister, Mister, please, Councilman, please do not invoke motivations from other members of this council. Please speak on the bill as it relates to your concerns and your particular issues.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Hold on, Madam, Madam Vice President. You, it's still Councilman Dorsey's floor, but we will not speak on the motivations of other members of this body. So please speak on, which remain to your concern about where we are in the process. I think the floor is yours. Please continue.
Yes, sir. I don't believe that I've spoken to any motivations, but I do believe.
You said the way that the process continue undermined. So that would be motivation from someone to do something to undermine the process.
I disagree that that's a characterization of motivation, but I'll move on.
Thank you.
Look, I'll leave it at that then, Mr. President. But I will say that I don't believe that I've spoken to anybody's motivations. I believe that it's fair for me to say that, that concerns that warrant consideration were not heard out and the attempt to raise such concerns were plainly treated with hostility. I don't believe that to say that they were treated with hostility speaks to motivation, only comportment. So, thank you.
I agree to your hostility statement. That's, but that's also a matter of subjectivity. So understood. Right now, I believe that there is a motion, as well as been properly seconded on the floor, to move this bill back into committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
I believe a roll call vote was requested.
Oh, you requested a roll call, Madam Chair? Yes, so Madam Clerk.
Well, I didn't. I'd like to speak on this first and then do, then we can do a roll call.
Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Um, I just want to talk about this bill a little bit first, and then we can do the roll call vote. So this, we have been working on this bill, or I have been working on this bill with the council president's office basically since December to get prepared for it to be introduced on January eleventh. It was introduced on the eleventh. It was a month. Then we scheduled a hearing on February ninth. And the hearing was at least two and a half hours long, lots of test, public testimony, just questions from the committee. Then we had a work session a month later, mainly to address the amendments that came from that committee hearing. I want to say that this is a brand-new piece of legislation, yes, but it's an important piece of legislation. Our country has experienced a pandemic now. We're in, the people are having financial difficulties. Some are being evicted, and many are becoming homeless. Some are in the process of renewing rental leases or signing new leases. Landlords require a lump sum security deposit for rentals at this particular time. This bill helps people manage their finances and adequate affordable housing. For those who cannot immediately afford to pay a lump sum security deposit, this bill provides two, only, only two alternatives. We need to start somewhere now. Option one, option A, rather, is a three installment payment, and it's refundable. And then there's option B, rental security deposit, which is not refundable, but each option is different. Both options, however, help tenants to pay their required security deposit. This is all about security deposits. There are other cities that have this in motion now, like Cincinnati, Ohio, Atlanta, Georgia, Philadelphia, New York, are using similar options to help tenants pay security deposits. Just this week, Miami passed a similar bill. We talked about surety bonds. The committee discussed surety bonds and insurance. The state law allows, state law allows landlords to refuse to accept surety bonds. The bill only requires landlords to accept from the tenant one of the two options for paying a lump sum security deposit. The Maryland, we are fortunate to have the Maryland Insurance Administration that regulates all insurance companies. We brought up, it was in the discussion of walkthrough inspections. The committee also discussed the inspections of rental units. According to the Law Department's report, state law also addresses inspections of rental properties. You know, we, there was discussion there. There, we have checked with, you know, this, this work session. It worked out, someone had put in the motion. We discussed these amendments. Somebody, someone had put in the motion to move the amendments. And I went on with the movable. In the middle of the movable, I even did a, the person was able to talk. I, I follow Robert's Rules of Order. We checked with the parliamentarian. There has been no mistakes or mishaps. This is an important piece of legislation, but I do want to say, we had our council luncheon. There were some that discuss, that just really feel that we shouldn't move, advance this to third reader. I'm going to, as sponsor of the bill, I have no problem with not moving that to third reader at this point. I want to give, I do want to give the council time to digest this. You know, if you would need to read some more, we don't have to advance it quickly to third reader. I just, my heart and soul is into this new piece of legislation. Our people, there are people out there that need extra money in their pockets now. And we have, we can, that's the beauty of being a councilperson. Let this happen, and then three, three to six months, we can come back and see how this bill is moving. That's what our jobs are. This is something that's brand-new. And my heart is in this. I, and I'll just.
Madam Chair. We know your heart is all the way in this. We have a motion on the floor. We want you to continue to speak to the motion. Do you have anything else other than all this in your heart about this bill regarding this particular motion?
I do like to thank, there were so many people that were involved in this bill from early on and before.
Madam Chair, you, you are not speaking to the motion.
Okay.
All right, you will have time to speak as it relates to your vote, but I don't want to get too far away from our motion. So we have a motion on the floor to send this back to committee. It's been moved. It's been properly seconded. I think we're at the point, Madam Chair, of where we're going to ask the clerk to call roll. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
President Mosby.
Nay.
Councilmembers Cohen.
Yes.
McCray.
No.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Nay.
Schleifer.
No.
Middleton.
No.
Torrance.
Nay.
Burnett.
Abstain.
Bullock.
Mr. President, opportunity to explain my vote, please? Yes, sir. So again, I just want to say, I appreciate all the work that's going into this bill. I am a member of the, of the committee. I know that there were some questions around the bill and some potential amendments that were offered. I had some amendments that I was looking to possibly offer and decided not to do so. I do appreciate the chair of the committee speaking some of the concerns that folks had and giving opportunity for folks to look into the bill and not move it to third reader this evening. Same time, also have deep respect, not only for the president's office, but also our colleague, Councilman Dorsey, who also had some questions and brought this motion tonight. I'm sensitive to some of the points that he raised. I also recognize the importance of trying to get this done in a more efficient, expedited fashion. So at this point, I will vote no on the motion. But again, I appreciate the sentiment offered in terms of wanting to return to committee. So my vote is no. Thank you, Councilman Bullock.
Councilmembers Porter.
Nay. Mr. President, may I have an opportunity to explain my vote, please?
Yes, the gentlewoman from the tenth, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I just want to also add something that Councilman Costello brought up at the council luncheon. It's very important when we're talking about delivering evidence-based data to any type of policy that we're moving forward and to do it in a timely manner. I think that, you know, having experienced eviction myself, something, something of this nature needs to be properly thought out in a way that impacts everyone and not just through a rushed, not through rushed movement within the, within the past eight hours. So I just want to caveat that to people that making sure that you send your amendments in a timely fashion and also making sure that you have proper discussions before these types of very important votes are coming to, to, to the council floor. Thank you, sir.
No, thank you for adding that, Councilwoman Porter. No, thank you for adding that, um, Councilwoman Porter.
Councilmember Costello.
Nay.
Stokes.
Nay.
Glover.
Nay.
And Ramos.
Yes.
I think the nays have it. Uh, thank you for your, uh, motion, uh, Councilman Dorsey. It, it fails. Um, next up, uh, Chairwoman, uh, uh, Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Okay, so, um-
We need to, we need to go into committee amendments.
Okay, so, uh, do we need to, so we gotta finish up twenty-one dash zero zero two-two?
Yes, we're gonna, we got it, we have to approve the, uh, committee amendments, so we can approve it for second reader.
Mr. President, point of order.
The committee heard-
Hold on one second. Point of order, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did the clerk read this one?
Yeah, we read it in first.
Thank you. I, I got confused there. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was read. So the committee heard the bill, heard this bill on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. There are committee amendments which were sent electronically to each council member. Um, in addition to striking certain language from the bill, um, the committee amendments would align the bill with state real property law, provide two additional options for a tenant to pay a security deposit. Option A is a third, is three installment payments, and option B is rental security deposit insurance. And, uh, continue to allow the landlord to use certain standards for tenant qualifications and continue to allow landlords acquire, um, regular renters insurance. I move the committee amendments.
There's a motion on the floor to move committee amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Okay, well, yep, uh, please note that Councilman Burnett, uh, of the eighth district would like to abstain from this, from that, from that vote as well. Uh, the ayes have it. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe that Councilwoman McCray and myself both have floor amendments to introduce. I'd like to take the opportunity now to introduce one.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, members, there is an amendment that I distributed to you all earlier. It's in your packet um, for tonight's meeting. Uh, the purpose of this amendment is to strike, uh, all references and related, uh, content pertaining to security deposit insurance from the bill. Um, and I, I'd like to speak on that. Um, in two thousand and five, Maryland Attorney General J. Joseph Curran came to a settlement finding that a company selling surety bonds, which this bill deceptively refers to as security deposit insurance. Uh, these companies were deceptive and predatory in selling these to tenants. Sixteen late, years later, what's changed? It's a different company, still deceptive practice, still predatory. And yet, the city of Baltimore is considering promoting the practice. Is security deposit insurance actually insurance? No, this is plain deception and we shouldn't be engaged in it. Why is this idea being promoted? Ostensibly, it's to help renters. But the question is, is it really? Here's the story that's being told. A person who doesn't have money for, say, a thousand dollar rent and, say, a thousand dollar lump sum deposit uh, is faced with a need for housing very immediately. So the idea here, under this PR mechanism of renters' choice, is let's give them an alternative. It sounds good on the surface. Let them pay a one-time price for a bond, uh, of, say, a hundred fifty dollars instead of the thousand dollar deposit. It sounds like a positive alternative. But first of all, they're never gonna get back that hundred fifty dollar deposit like they get back a security deposit on the back end of the bill. Now let's look a couple of years ahead. It's a year, it's two years later, and that person is leaving that apartment. The landlord now makes a claim against the bonding company. In this case, there's one company in particular that is the only one that I know of that has been named in any discussion of this bill. The landlord goes to that bonding company and says, this tenant is causing me to have to do three or four thousand dollars of repair to this apartment for which the rent was a thousand dollars a month and for which the security deposit would have only been one thousand dollars. They did three thousand dollars of, you know, they, they've caused me to do three thousand dollars worth of work. And what happens is the bonding agency pays that money directly back to the landlords. And then goes after the tenant for that amount as a debt owed. And the tenant, more or less, signed away their right to dispute this upfront. And so it comes back to the question of, were we really helping that person in the first place? A, a couple of years prior, they didn't have money for the security deposit, but now suddenly they have three or four thousand dollars sitting around to pay back to this bonding agent? Back to two thousand and five, AG a current, AG Curran found that what was predatory was that the company failed to adequately present the terms and conditions to the tenant. So basically, we've said, as long as you present the terms and conditions to people in an adequate manner, it's okay, it's legal. The problem is that in reality, is that we're presenting this to people in a moment of desperation. We're presenting this to people when they have no other option, pushing them towards this option that puts them at great financial risk in the future. They enter into this agreement. Why? Because the city of Baltimore promoted this predatory practice with this bill. Can we stop these businesses from working in Baltimore City? Can we stop landlords from accepting surety bo, bonds as a security deposit alternative? No, but should we be promoting the practice? Absolutely not. Not a single organization that advocates in Baltimore City for tenants and housing opportunity is in support of this provision of this bill, and they stated so to the committee in writing and in public testimony. And the bill doesn't promote even any of the other alternatives to security deposits that exist. It's a one-shot deal to promote this particular type of predatory practice. Uh, and so I'd like to move this amendment, Mr. President.
I asked for a roll call vote, Mr. President.
There's a motion on the floor to move the amendment.
I asked for a roll call, oh.
It might not be-
Okay.
One, so there is a second. It's, it's been, uh, probably moved and seconded. All those in favor, I'm sorry, you asked for a roll call. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President Mosby.
Nay.
Councilmembers Cohen.
Yes.
McCray.
No.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Nay.
Schleifer.
No.
Middleton.
No.
Torrance.
Mr. President, may I explain my vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, members, I've looked over the provisions of not only the amendment, but also looked at the information provided by advocates, as well as looked at our state law, looked at our consumer protections under the Attorney General's Office. I find that, quite simply, there, the case law that is being referred to is not adequate. The information in which we are actually is not a duty of the city council, but rather the state insurance industry, as well as the State General Assembly. That's why tonight I vote nay, because this is an option that is provided to our actual renters, but also there's this requirement of disclosure. And under the amendments, uh, or under the committee amendments, the disclosure would have to be that the person understand that they would not receive the payments back. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that the information that will be provided does fall within the purview of what the state law is and also the regulations of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Asquire. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Costello.
I'm sorry, Council-
I think you skipped, Ma, uh, Mr. President, I think we skipped a couple of councilmembers. It's back to the eighth-
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to eighth. Burnett.
Pardon me, Councilmember Burnett.
Abstain.
Bullock.
Nay.
Porter.
Nay.
Costello.
Nay.
Stokes.
Nay.
Glover.
No.
And Ramos.
No.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Dorsey, for bringing this amendment. The amendment fails. Um, are there any additional amendments from the floor?
Mr. President, I have an additional floor amendment.
Uh, the body would like to recognize Chairwoman McCray.
Um, thank you. I'm introducing this floor amendment to amend the legislation to reflect that it does not apply to leases for public housing administered by the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. Colleagues, I've reached out to each of you personally to discuss this floor amendment prior to the city council meeting. You also were emailed the amendments, and at this time, Mr. President, I move the amendment.
It's been moved to our here second?
Second by Councilman Stokes.
It's been moved and properly seconded twice. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. There is one abstention from the gentleman from the eighth district, uh, Councilman Burnett. Um, Madam Chair?
Um, I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second?
Second, Councilman Stokes.
Uh, the bill has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, and there's an abstention from the gentleman from the eighth district. Um, at this point, Madam Chair, I believe it is your, um, your desire not to invoke, uh, the council rules to read it into, uh, third reader today. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. We'll move through the normal process and I-
You would like to, you would like to give an additional week, uh, for additional session for the council to, uh, talk about this?
To, to basically, just to digest everything. Again, I think this is gonna be just a wonderful start in helping our city. It's, and it's not just the pandemic. The pandemic has brought out so many, so many things and so many issues. And I think this is gonna be a helpful new piece of legislation. And again, thank you, councilmembers, for, um, really looking at this and continuing to, um, look at it some more, and, um, I appreciate your support.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and thank-
Oh, we lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I said, I, I wanted to thank the council. Uh, this is the level of dialogue and discourse that we need to have, particularly as it relates to uh, critical pieces of legislation like this that we know will directly affect and impact our citizens, particularly in a time of crisis as we kinda fight through this COVID thing, and this COVID thing and the residual effects on our economy and on our, on our, on our families and our communities. So, um, again, this is the type of substantive legislation, uh, thoughtful legislation, timely legislation that we're gonna continue to grow. Uh, this is clearly one of the, the stars in the fast one hundred days. Um, very thankful for your leadership on this, uh, Chairwoman Middleton, uh, as well as your willingness to work with other colleagues, uh, and pull back, uh, the idea of, uh, you wanting it to, um, to, to proceed onto third reader tonight and holding off another week for us to have additional dialogue and debate. So thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could go on to Council Bill twenty-one dash one-three R.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirteen R, approval for the exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license, twelve twenty, West North Avenue.
Chairwoman Middleton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before we go over these three bills, I just want to remind the total council, because this was, um, this is specifically before the committee, but, um, you know, we had discussion with, with these type of bills. Um, we have an opportunity now where, uh, legislation like this, um, this, um, approval of exchanges of liquor licenses are, you know, that's a new added step that's gonna be coming before the council. And these establishments now are going to have to, you know, get approval from us and before they go to the, um, Board of Liquor Licensing. So it's an added prove, approval that's gonna help our committees. And it's also gonna keep us aware of, you know, the liquor establishments that are, and what they're doing within our communities. So this, uh, this first bill, in fact, all three of them are, um, Councilman Torrance's bills. And the first one is, um, as was mentioned, twenty-one dash zero zero thirteen R, and, uh, the committee heard this bill on March ninth. The committee recommended the bill is favorable. I move the bill favorable. Um, I would like, uh, uh, I guess before we move that, I should have given an opportunity. Um, if Councilman Torrance would like to speak, um, on all three of these before we go ahead and move the bills favorable.
Thank you, Council, uh, Vice President. Uh, what's related to these bills, these, these bills are part of a violence reduction strategy, um, offered by Senator Antonio Hayes in the twenty twenty General Assembly. What this does is require that these establishments create, um, apologies, parenting the pandemic. Uh, is that the establishments offer high-definition cameras that are looking at access to the entry and exit of their actual, um, establishments, but as well as their wells. It's also the angles capturing things that are going on outside of those actual establishments. What we found through BPD data is that near these establishments, murders, rapes, as well as, uh, non-lethal shootings have occurred. Hopefully, these cameras will help us in actually capturing such evidence that we can be useful to actually reduce violence, but also ensure that there is justice for others in the city. I just wanna offer that as the understanding of why we're moving these. And also, these establishments are actually actually allowing themselves to enter a cold early as well as open later. Um, this is also a strategy to, to reduce the number of persons who believe that this adds to, to youth being, having access to alcohol as well. Um, to give you an idea, the hours will be from nine AM to ten PM or ten PM, ten AM to ten PM as well. Whereas the normal hours were six AM to twelve AM. And with that, I reserve back to the chair.
Madam Chair, I believe there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second for this bill?
A second.
Uh, this bill's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted onto City Council Bill twenty-one dash fourteen R.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash fourteen R, approval for the exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license, twenty-seven thirty-three Pennsylvania Avenue.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. The committee heard this bill on March ninth. The committee recommends the bill is favorable, and I move the bill favorable.
It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This motion is approved. This resolution is adopted on the City Council Resolution twenty-one dash one-five R.
City Council Bill twenty, twenty-one dash fifteen R, approval for the exchange of a Class BD seven license to a Class A seven license, twenty-one thirty-nine Pennsylvania Avenue.
Uh, body would like to recognize, um, Madam Vice President again.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee, um, also heard this final bill on March ninth, and the committee recommended the bill was favorable. I move the bill favorable.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. This motion is approved. The resolution is adopted. Now moving on to education, workforce, and youth. City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two R, um, The ayes have it, this motion is approved, the resolution is adopted, now moving on to Education Workforce and Youth, City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two R, um, Madam Clerk, if you could read that in.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty-two R, assisting Baltimore City artists.
At this point, I would like to recognize, um, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, the committee held, Educated Workforce Committee held a hearing on March eleventh and the committee voted as favorable.
Is there a second on this bill?
Second.
Uh, this bill's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this resolution is adopted, now on to Rules and Oversight, EA twenty-one dash three-zero, Madam Clerk.
EA twenty-one dash thirty, Christopher J. Shorter, Chief Administrative Officer.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer.
Very much, Mr. President, the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee held a hearing on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. It was a great and productive, uh, hearing to meet the new, uh, city administrator and the committee moved this favorable, so I'd like to move this nomination favorable.
There's a motion on the floor? Is there a second? It's been moved, it's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor of approving the nomination, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The nomination is now approved, uh, Baltimore City has its first Chief Administrative Officer in Christopher J. Shorter. On to City Council Bill twenty-one dash two-zero, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty, Baltimore City Commission for Women, ex officio members.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Schleifer again.
Yeah, the committee heard this bill also on March eleventh. Um, there is an amendment in your inboxes, the amendment adds that an additional ex officio member of the commission, and I'd like to move the amendment, uh, amendment favorable.
So I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor of approving the committee amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendment is approved, uh, Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'd like to move the bill favorable as amended.
Is there a second? This bill has been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, the bill moves on to third reader, next up, Madam Clerk, is City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirty-six.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash thirty-six, city code definitions and rules of interpretation.
Chairman Schleifer, the floor is yours.
Um, yeah, this is a final one, we had a hearing on, on March eleventh, and I'd like to move this bill favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor of approving, uh, this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion is approved, this bill moves on to third reader, next up is Public Safety and Government Operations, Madam Clerk, if you could read in, City Council Bill twenty-one dash eighteen R.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash eighteen R, investigative hearing, Workday Enterprise Resource Planning Implementation.
At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, this bill came out of committee on March tenth, twenty-twenty-one, it was sponsored by Councilmember, uh, Danielle McCray. And the committee approved the bill as favorable, so I want to move this bill as favorable.
Thank you, uh, this bill's pro- it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. This resolution is now adopted, now on, uh, third reader, um, remember we have the late fees pass, uh, due rent, the twenty-one dash two-one that we invoked, uh, City Council Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancement. Uh, at this point, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could, um, read in twenty-one dash twenty-one, uh, and then go to roll for vote.
City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty-one, late fees for past due rent. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmembers Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Upstate.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Aye.
Ramos.
Yes.
The ayes have it, uh, this bill, uh, City Council Bill twenty-one dash twenty-one, late fees for past due rent is now officially approved, congratulations, uh, Chairman, um, Stokes, uh, for your bill, uh, this bill is approved, now we're going to move on to bills on third reader. The clerk, please read, um, Bill twenty-one, uh, dash five, uh, and then do roll call.
Twenty-one dash five, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R seven zoning district, variances, eight-ten Argon Drive. President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmembers Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Upstate.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Uh.
And Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved, on to twenty-one dash six, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash six, rezoning, four oh seven Benning House Road. President Mosby.
Aye.
Cohen.
Aye.
McCray.
Yes.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Conway.
Aye.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Burnett.
Yes.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Costello.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Glover.
Yes.
And Ramos.
Yes.
This bill is approved, Madam Clerk, on to twenty-one dash ten.
Twenty-one dash ten, rezoning, twenty-eighty-seven Druid Park Drive, President Mosby.
Aye.
Councilmembers.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, point of order?
Uh, yes, Councilman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
Chairman, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, on, on third reader, I, can we do a, or, I don't know, traditionally in the past, even in this council, we've done, just where the clerk reads the names and we're not required to vote. But I don't know if that's possible, but I.
Is that, are you, are you asking for that, um, Chairman Costello?
I'm not sure off the top of my head which rule I'm, I'm asking for.
You don't have to ask for the specific rule, just, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I am, Mr. President.
Okay, I support that, uh, Chairman Costello, is there any unreadiness or any concerns, um, from the council? Hearing and seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, uh, excuse me, point of order, I, I guess I always thought that when we were doing third reader and not voting, it was because we had already, you know, everybody sort of agreed that we were doing, you know, that we were going ahead and voting as opposed to doing, I don't, I think in Roberts, you're actually formally supposed to vote, um, through the whole thing, is that's my understanding.
M- Mr. President, if I may respond.
Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, to, to my colleagues', uh, points, a good question, um, what we, what we've done traditionally in the past, at least the past six and a half years or so is, uh, the clerk will read the, um, the short title of the bill on third reader, and then we'll just read through and it's an assumption that it's an affirmative vote for everyone.
Unless there's a, 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 a nay that's called.
Objection.
A nay or an abstention, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we have, uh, that on the floor, uh, we can proceed with that, um, is there any additional unreadiness, uh?
Miss, I'd like to check, I'd like to check into it for next meeting, thanks.
That's fine with us, uh, hearing none, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, if you could just read through the names.
President Mosby, councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
Thank you, uh, this, this bill is approved, on to the next bill.
Twenty-one dash eleven, rezoning, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth Pennsylvania Avenue. President Mosby, councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved, on to the next bill.
Twenty-one dash thirteen, rezoning, forty-fifteen Foster Avenue, four thousand Hudson Street, and eight oh one South Haven Street. President Mosby, councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved, on to twenty-one dash fifteen.
Twenty-one dash fifteen, zoning, conditional use parking lots, one fifteen and one eighteen Mount Clair Street. President Mosby, councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
I think we have a nay from Councilman Dorsey, is that accurate, Councilman Dorsey?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, I, I think we have one nay on that, if that, the record could reflect that Councilman Dorsey is a nay. This bill is approved, on to the next bill, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash twenty-four, minority and women's business utilization emergencies. President, President Mosby, councilmembers Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, and Ramos.
This bill is approved. I believe that is the last bill for the night, uh, so we're going to go into committee, um, announcements. Uh, chairs, when you hear a committee, please proceed with your committee announcement, first up, we're going to have Madam Vice President, uh, as well as Chair of Economic and Community Development, uh, Chairwoman Green Middleton.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, there, um, are no committee announcements at this time.
Thank you, next, we're going to move on to Education Workforce and Youth, uh, Chairman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Education and Workforce, um, Committee will hold a hearing on April the first at ten AM, it's the succession and planning, um, bill. Also, Education Workforce Development will be hot, holding a hearing on April the eighth at five o'clock for the passing through of Baltimore City Public Schools, thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair, next up, uh, Health, Environment and Technology, uh, Madam Chair, uh, McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, there are no committee announcements at this time.
Thank you, Chairwoman, next up, Public Safety, Government Operations, Chairman, um, Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President, there are no committee announcements, uh, for tonight.
Thank you, next up, Rules and Legislative Oversight, Chairman Schla- Schleifer. Chairman Schleifer, you are on mute.
Start by, that it wasn't unmuting, um, I'd like to move, uh, to suspend rules ten-two and ten-three to announce the hearing.
Hearing no objections, the rules are suspended.
Uh, the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hear, uh, bill number CC twenty-one dash zero-zero-zero-seven R, uh, a hearing for investigative, uh, hearing on the water billing system on Thursday, March twenty-fifth at two PM, and, um, this will be on Trump TV. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, last but certainly, certainly not least, uh, Ways and Means, Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, no announcements.
No, thank you, uh, so now we're going to move into, I'm sorry. Yeah?
Uh, please forgive me, I forgot to, to mention, um, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be holding a legislative oversight hearing with the Police Department on April seventh at one PM, virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, now we're going to move into regular announcements, uh, are there any regular announcements? Please raise your hand and I will call you to the floor. I see one, uh, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, um, I just wanted to give you a bit of an update, um, on, on the tech sale, you heard our, um, our mayor, uh, announced the other night that he is working hard to be able to help our homeowners in tech sale this year, so I'm very grateful for all of your support of this issue and also, um, to the mayor for this commitment. Uh, we had a press conference earlier, um, emphasizing some of the important points around tech sale, uh, and we will be working with the mayor on perfecting what, uh, exactly all that is going to mean. Um, and should, uh, hopefully be hearing more, uh, very soon, so, um, thank you all very much for, for your, um, support and the fact that, you know, uh, we're, we're all working together to really help our homeowners, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Ramos, any additional announcements? Hearing and seeing none, um, I would turn this time over to Vice President of the Baltimore City Council, Madam Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, April fifth, twenty-twenty-one at five PM. And may we please have a moment of silence for the now sixty-five homicides in this, uh, city, uh, let's pre- please, um, pray for, for our families. And the now eight hundred and twenty-three Baltimoreans who have, um, lost lives to the COVID-nineteen epidemic that we are still experiencing. So please continue to, you know, wear your mask, wash your hands, it's important to still practice, um, social distancing a- as we continue to, uh, get vaccinated and move forward in the city.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, uh, we're going to have a moment of silence, uh, for the sixty-five victims, um, of homicide this year, as well as the eight hundred and twenty-three Baltimoreans who have lost their life as a result of COVID-nineteen. Thank you, everyone, there being no, uh, further business, uh, this concludes the seventh meeting of the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council, love you, Baltimore. Thank you, guys.